Here.
Here.
Debbie Gerhardt.
Here.
Freddie Goble.
Here.
Kiva McGuire. Ewan. Roy Roberts.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Tim, will you do an indication?
Let's pray. Precious heavenly Father, thank you so much for such a beautiful day. We thank you for the blessings that you give our hometown. Lord, we ask that you be with us and lead. Cause us to follow your direction, Lord, for we know we can't go wrong if that takes place. Precious name of Christ, amen.
Our flag was taken out of the building. There's a flag in the back corner right there, so I looked towards the camera corner and it was like a laser. Like a back corner of the building right there, a fire alarm. We don't work that.
Hell of a fight.
Flag.
Oh, we got one right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have business lined up first. Bob Ross has, I'm sure he flew in from, whoa, foot is on two wheels or four wheels or whatever.
Three.
But Bob Ross is with the Boston Associates who did our audit. He was asked to be here by Freddie Goble this time that he had some questions. So Bob, you want to come up and?
Sure. I was asked, he was asked to be here about me?
Yes, sir. Last meeting when we was going to prove it, you said that you wanted to talk to.
I did.
You can see. Have you guys copied it with you?
No, I didn't realize.
Roy, thank you. Next one on the table.
Can you real quick? Okay. Is this the audit that was done?
This audit, no, this is the audit that was done for the yearly audit. This was our yearly audit.
This is not the audit I had approached.
That's the one we did at the last meeting and you asked about it. He said, I've got some questions, right? And I said, can I answer them? And you said, go on, we'll talk to it.
You did. You did answer them. You came right over here behind me and I said, hey, man, this is no big deal. This is, I don't know where, you know, the boss, the Stonecrest Dock Force was 1.125 million or whatever. And you said, oh, that's just what they owe us. And I said, okay, that's fine. Now that's what happened.
You got anything you want to say first?
I have a lot of things to say. We really appreciate you guys engaging us to do the audit for 15. We had a crew down there probably two weeks, about three people each. And I don't get out that much anymore, but I came down one week. I got back and I told the audit manager, Ed, I said, don't you ever let me go through the field again. Because I've got everything I basically knew 20 years ago. But anyway, I had a great time coming down here. I brought my wife with me. We found long and I was just enjoying myself. It's so much peace and everything. She could talk the whole way almost. Finally she said, do you hear me? I said, of course I hear you. She said, what'd I say? I said, you're talking about screwing down our ass, weren't you? She said, no, that's not it. But we put in, or I put in about 68 hours last week doing taxes. This is our busy season right now. And a lot of changes have come out. But we're doing a pretty good job of getting a lot of refunds for a lot of people, you know. All right, but anyway, the audit report is here and I think it was presented last meeting that you had the opportunity to look at.
Yes, sir.
So if you have any questions whatsoever.
I have a question.
I will try to.
Did you come up here because I asked you to?
I'm gonna submit my travel voucher to the mayor. Yes.
You come up here because I, I've never seen or talked with you in my life.
No, sir. No, sir. When you, when you had the question, that's when I, and you said you wanted to ask them, that's when I have to come back.
What is going on? You been in jail? Yeah, yeah.
Oh, maybe we saw one another.
Do you play golf?
No, when we, when we voted to approve it last time, we voted to approve, we had a motion to approve it and you said you had some questions you had to ask.
That one, that one question about Stoneridge, that's the question I had and you answered it for me. Did you not come over here?
I did.
And say, oh, that's just what they owe us?
Actually, that's not what you asked me, Freddie, but that's okay. That's okay. That's not what it was. I need a motion to approve, all right?
I'll get a motion.
Thank you.
You got a second? I'll thank you. I'll vote.
I guess. Since I don't know, all I supposed to know, I both know.
We have one day, Mark. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Hey, I did rush out of the office and I picked up a binder for City of Prestonburg.
Yeah.
It says Prestonburg City Utilities.
I got the wrong one. I'm glad you have a lot of questions in.
Thank you.
All right, um, we have the audit thing here. We have to move it up front. Now we're going to go with Mac Financials. Keith? Oh, wait there. We went on the floor. Any investors from the floor want to speak? Denise, you're on, you're on the agenda, Denise. You got to weigh it out.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay, for those of you don't know my philosophy, I'm here on behalf of the Full Kenny Animal Shelter. And we was wanting to know if it would be possible if we could get an increase in your all donation from $400 to $600 to help run another animal shelter.
What I can tell you is that we are getting ready to start our budgets. We're actually initiating tonight. We can't change anything till actually fiscal year. When we can do our budgets, our budget's going to be put out. As a matter of fact, everybody have a copy of actual to the budgets today. And we'll discuss it at that point. And that's all I can tell you right now.
Anything you all can do would be greatly appreciated. As everyone knows, time is getting tough and everybody else.
It's not something we just vote on because it's part of the budgets, budgeted out every year and have to deal with through the budget. But any council, any questions?
Freddie, do.
Anyone else from the floor? Calvin?
Mayor, my name's Calvin Howe. I'm a deputy. And I spoke to you all, maybe you know, at college last month.
Yes, sir. Come on.
I was inviting you all to come to a groundbreaking for the second next month, two o'clock. So you think it's in place with me?
Yes, sir.
Check everybody. At two o'clock, on Saturday. I hope for weekend and fall fishing, I might be able to do that on a weekend. I wonder if they'll wait.
What time, Calvin?
Two o'clock. And what I'm here for is, once the city utilities meeting that night, I informed them of our needs. And of course, the city utilities in Prestonburg, two different entities, that I understand. And they go out soon, we want to kind of help. But we moved all the water lines, gas lines and power lines, except those city water. And there's a six inch water line runs right through the property that we want to build on. About the size of 6,000 square foot facility that we will be rebuilding. It's a veterans emergency shelter for veterans and their families. So in case I didn't tell you what it looks like. It's going to benefit the city of Prestonburg a lot and the community. And hopefully take a big load off the other organizations who's trying to build a homeless shelter. Because I think we're going about 65% of the homeless, far better somehow than us. And when I say families, if a family loses their home by far, the homeless. So we're going to take them in, take care of, we do it anyway, but we have to go to hotels and it costs a lot of money. And this facility is going to run us probably next year for $400,000. And we're not getting any government grants because we're not going to be controlled by the government in any way. Because to get a veteran in to hire them, the veterans shelter have up there, you got to go through about three or four different organizations, meet their guidelines. And if you get in there, you got to stay two years to be able to do rehab or whatever. These people need a place to live, man, I need rehab. And that's what I'm running to back in February. I had a guy, hadn't picked us. I think the city police helped me pick him up and put him there for five days. He had a PI against him 10 years ago. So he wasn't no bad guy. But he got off the, I know he's a bridge for a good reason. But when he got out, I couldn't get him anywhere. Because he wasn't a guy that needed help in that area for drugs or anything. He just needed to settle. But my problem right now is, is the finances. We going to ask, I'm asking the city of Prestonburg if they can help us out with expenses or whatever to take care of this water line. We're going to have to have moves. It's very expensive because it's a six inch line. It's no cash arm. They got to put it back in. The materials alone, from what I understand, is going to run about $5,000. Time we get through with that, and we got to pay for sewage tap-ins for water systems. I've got three taps, one of them being for sprinkler system, which is a four inch tap, two other water taps plus sewage tap that got to be increased. That in itself, I guess, more $8,000, if not more, because of the sprinklers. And we need assistance. We've got about half the money that we need for this building. And we're going to have to rely on the public and other means and other things that we have to gather money. And still, it's going to take us about a year. But $5,000 to come out of our budget all at once is more than a couple hurdles.
What, what did the city utilities tell you the other night?
They said that they thought, okay, that this line was scheduled to be re-directed. And I don't know that to be a fact. I didn't elaborate on it. I figured they'd figure it out and let me know. But this will be my first time I've come here to ask for help if that isn't passed. Because after this, today, I'm going to be very busy. And I don't have the time to control the meeting.
Unfortunate. Go ahead.
Well, go ahead.
Now, go ahead.
Just wanted that something maybe that you could check into and get the feel of it, the city board's thing, that what he's saying, if it's scheduled to be moved, maybe that more information.
Well, they thought it was to be moved. And I don't guess they had the details right in front of them because what I asked them, I was surprised to them, wasn't being discussed at that time on the thing. And I'm sure they got a lot of land they got moving now. Well, that's one of our, I don't know. It'd be nice if it was going to be moved.
If they thought it was, I'm pretty sure it was.
Okay.
Just knowing, knowing the kind of work they do. They do quality work up there.
They do.
And win would be the problem.
Right. And I did ask them permission to go ahead and build over this, on the assumption it's going to be moved one way or the other. Then that being said, if by fact it doesn't, toss us anything. Somewhere down the road, we would need assistance through the city here to maybe help us with a few other things. We got to incorporate some property behind it to make for a parking lot. And as you know, it's been a nonprofit organization. And we're doing this on our own. With the city of Prestonburg, we certainly could use all the assistance we can get. And I'm here to ask for that and let you know in the future that I may be coming down here and asking this or that or the other. And I think I'll get the corporation from you all because, you know, I think you all want this thing to go through, but you'll be as generous as you can, but still, I won't be able to burn and give it away. I understand that.
We will work with you in whatever we can, Calvin. And you don't have discussion more than once.
That's right. We have.
Uh, the downside is, you know, the same reason we don't want the federal funding stuff, we also follow the same guideline.
I understand.
But there may be someplace where it will assist you all after there been an issue, we're going to try to work with you in what we can. Well, I suggest that if you do have any issues that come up directly that we can help you with, you'll come see me. And next council meeting after that, I have facts and we're better going to it with factual information. Specific things, some, some specific things we can work with, some we can't.
I understand.
So if you bring that specific situation to me, we'll check out the legality of it and we'll direction.
Well, this has been a learning process for me, going to do something like this from start to finish. And so far from the city and the city utilities, I've gotten all kinds of help. The police department is going to help us out along with the fire department and old Bob Cottner, I guess, he'll find out where I live. He'll burn my house now. I bought him to death. But it's things I need to know what I don't know. But so far, everything's working out fine. But I wanted to re-eleaborate to you all what it is and what it consists of, and that you're still invited and hope you all can come.
Calvin, I think you're 15 months and I'm not even learning enough to get started yet.
I understand. Well, you're a good thing about it.
Well, how about that?
I'm trying to kiss up my head back, please. But I know that I won't be able to see you no more until the second. You are invited and you will probably have a couple minutes you have to speak, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Calvin. Uh, anybody else from the floor? Alan?
Alan. I hadn't really thought about even saying anything about the homeless shelter situation. Because Calvin's doing the veterans, which by the way, Bobby lives in that new house down the street from you, so makes me busy.
I'm already busy.
Okay. I just thought it'd help you out. Funny colored house, deep, some kind of color. I'm not a color person. Anyway, I wrote you an email a couple nights ago about the log cabin.
Yes, sir.
And you never responded to me.
I have not responded yet. I don't know how to chance.
And I just think that, you know, if Ronnie Rice was here, which I don't see him right off the bat, of course, having that cataract surgery, I recognize people right off the bat. But if we already have money invested in that as a city, in labor, transportation costs, whatever, I would like to say that, you know, if you can go back and rescind your decision, like we had the surplus sale at Earth Park a year ago or so, raised a little bit of money on surplus equipment, about got me killed over a wood chipper, you know, for some posts about it online and.
Yes, there's a, you talking about the log cabin?
Yes, sir.
Tourism.
Yes, sir.
Trouble right now. We.
Well, they offered it back to you is why, is what I read, that they've offered it back to you and you told me you didn't want no part of it, but.
Whoa, I never said that. I'm.
It was reported in the paper. I'm just going by that. And I, that's why I wrote you the email. Because, you know, facts come from the horse's mouth.
I have never.
Now, if that's the truth, and we can go by that, who knows? I don't believe a lot of things I read or have been told over my lifetime, circling in and out of the city over the last 40 some odd years. But if we get back and immediately declare it a surplus property and put it up for sale, I have four, over four acres of land at Lakeview Village, and I'd be willing to, you know, maybe make a bid if it's cost effective and set it up as a primitive lodging during the seasonal business that we have. Because I have one of the few places there on my four acres, which was once owned by a multimillionaire who's left the area now. And you can actually see the lake from my property. And it's one of the few places that you can do that up in that, on that hillside. And it's only on the first level up. And, you know, you can see the tove and it's a real, you know, beautiful scene, you know, scenery in the summer. I would be willing to, you know, let my family have last say on when they want to stay, come visit, whatever they decide to do. And let tourism have first crack out of the box as far as, you know, preserving rental rates and set it up as a primitive cabin as it should be. And at least it preserves a little part of our history. And I understand that, you know, at one point in time, since we have the city sewage and water available at Lakeview now, that has eliminated the cesspool problem that was there years ago, that, you know, at some point, we can take that into the city. Because they, when they take that sewer, they give up all right to fight annexation and/or whatever else. Just as Cedar Trace was back several years back, when they thought they'd get by with that. And they found out that it cost them over $300,000 to, you know, fight a losing battle. That's one of the things I like for you to take other advisement and think about. And if we can do that, and do it as a surplus property, like I said, Ronnie Rice, I understand that we had $9,000 invested in. I don't know if that's just the purchase, or perhaps the purchase, then when they went and numbered the logs, so when they took apart, they could reassemble it as is.
The city did not purchase it. It was purchased by tourism. We took it down and did all the labor stuff.
We as far as.
We as far as the city did.
Okay, so we do have money in.
The city is investing.
Yes, sir. I think it's a way to recoup some of those funds, which in this time is critical.
They were supposed to have a log cabin expert come in over there on that. Me, I wasn't there.
Right. That was the beginning.
Yeah, I wasn't even there at this particular meeting. So let me follow up on it and see what's going on. And I haven't had a chance this week.
I was just somebody that was supposed to.
It's up on Stoneridge on Friday right now.
Supposed to come to kind of the cabin.
Yeah.
And I also have a place to store it as well, until I would be ready to do that project.
Well, if, if they're going to give it to us, it's.
Well, that's the thing. It was kind of misworded there. They never said that the city didn't want anything to do with it, or tourism itself didn't want. They were making a motion to kind of.
Specifically to do tourism was out, want to do CD instead.
That is not the case. That's.
At all.
Um, the CD followed it in the motion. What happened is tourism is making a motion to kind of invest and look to see if anyone else is interested in taking on, such as a historical group or any nonprofit. Because for us, we have a lot within our budgets. We're limited as well. So we just want to invest and kind of see, is there someone else willing to do this?
If I did.
But it wasn't one for the other.
It's not for my personal use necessarily. And, but I am kind of a history buff, and I like to see preserved ones, can be preserved from our past.
Unless I'm mistaken, you're offering to set up, you're wanting to set up as an economic development, a lodge, a room to rent for people coming in town.
Cabin rental during the summer months, that, you know, it can be rented out by the night, week, day, month.
You know, I tend to host tourism meetings. I did not tend to have nothing in Frankfurt that day, but I will follow up on it, see what's going on. And if, if there weren't relinquished ownership of it, obviously the city council would have an option to be able to make a surplus. If we do, we'll make love it.
We can make an immediate surplus in case there's any kind of, you know, something that I don't know about and it's, you know, like some taboo stuff going on. I don't want nothing like that.
Unfortunately, nothing happens immediately when the government.
Well, I'm saying you can declare, do the city council, make a motion.
No, you cannot. The law, the law requires a specific process.
Right.
For surplusing property. Not saying it can't be done, but it has to follow the procedures.
Right.
I'm not saying immediate, like making it happen. I'm just saying to make the motion.
Oh, well.
To declare it as surplus property.
As soon as I find out. If they're going to relinquish it, and if they relinquish ownership to us, yeah, we'll, we'll be moving on pretty quick, I'd say.
Is this stored on our, on city property?
Yes.
Okay. So there would be a process, but at least it would go to bring some, hopefully bring some money back.
Yeah, if that's, if that's what the council decides to do with it, yes. If they relinquish it to us. I don't know for a fact that they relinquish it.
Right. I understand. But I just thought it'd be as a case.
Oh, if that's the case, we'll definitely. We've had, we've had a surplus sale before.
And also, I know that Bobby has another job, that he does contracts to the city. Is he still the person I need to talk to about zone changes and stuff like that?
Yes.
Okay. Because my dreams were Prestonburg, I heard talking to the Kentucky League of City guys when you first took over, that, you know, we do have a demand. And it was even in the paper a couple of weeks ago about a grant that was offered and awarded to Mountain Com to bring low income housing into our area. You know, we have a, especially with the downturn of the economy, that we do have a greater need for that at this time.
Right.
And that just happens to be one specialty of mine. Because, you know, it seems like to me that we've been stuck in a situation that we're going to want to have enough.
They have quite a bit.
And my money's taken low. Couple of people.
All right.
You know, like.
What, what's your question on that, Calvin?
How do I get the process started? Do I go through Bobby? Do I need?
You'll have contact Bobby, and he'll initiate anything. We'll take it for a planning zoning board, which will do that. In fact, now I've got another appointment for it later on, on the agenda. And once we get that going, we'll be moving on with it.
Okay. Because it's in, you know, a fairly nice part of town. But my goal is to eliminate all inequalities in housing. And one of these days, my dream goal is to have low income housing, even if it's one house that's worth $500,000 on the golf course, it's don't rest. No matter what it costs, maybe out of pocket.
There's restrictions that are listed out of every document.
I understand that. I'm just saying that everybody has a right to live, just as good as Donald Trump or whoever else, you know, whoever they are. As far as Calvin's homeless shelter, most people, I don't say this, Calvin, to be weird about it, but I'm working with the other group, if you know, that, you know, for the county homeless shelter.
Yes.
And I won't say the commitments that I made to them, but I still keep my commitments. And Calvin knows me from 20 years ago, knows that I'm pretty stickler about that. But on this thing about the hotels, if you come up, you and I can work together to have a rental property that if you get a warrant and stay there with one of your homeless people to be in charge of it, I can beat your motel rate by the month. And that's what they're doing too. And I, people don't know that much too much.
I understand what you're offering to. I need you to take it up outside of the meeting. We have the law on the agenda.
All right. One last thing.
Okay.
I've been writing something for months now. I'm trying to research it. And in the budget that was not under your administration that was done, I just wondered if there was any time that we found the $5,000 for the property that was sold out at the building, the hillside property.
That is one of the, coming out of the last audit, the audit that was done by Adam Middleman's office, state auditor. That's been turned over to investigators. I'm not involved in it anymore. They've got the information. That'll be a question to them, not me.
So our books don't show any kind of income of dollars, what I take from reading.
I will tell you something.
I read the 30th U. Page audit, audit several times, you know, trying to figure out.
I will tell you that it says developed property.
Yes, I understand that.
Some of the, some of the property was developed.
Yes.
That's something we've had, I'm staying away from that to the criminal investigation stuff. Now, once all that's done, I'll follow up on what I need to follow up on. But right now, anything to get involved in it, if we get involved in it anyway, it's going to muddy everything up.
Well, I asked you to get involved in it. I just wanted to know if you all ever found a record since he did it of $5,000 being somewhere.
Again, that was about undeveloped property. It specifically says developed property.
Yeah.
Property was not developed when they sold it.
So I'm not talking about a particular property, those three lots I'm talking about.
The only thing listed in that audit was those particular properties. The rest of, I'm staying out of it and don't say clear of it to the investigation.
Okay. It's like I told you, this has nothing to do with politics. It has to do with factual things that need to be included in a fair and open, you know.
We're not, we're not identity.
I understand that. And I don't either, like, have you got to tell you.
But that's what, that's why we're staying out of it. We're letting them do the investigation.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the floor? Keith Cottler, Mac Financials.
Yee-haw.
You got to go up here to the cameras.
Well, the, on the agenda, it says Mac Financials, but periodically we'd like to do a report to the council to keep just the general status of the Mountain Art Center. And so the financials are a part of that. What you see before you is a, a actual versus budget. The actual numbers are through February, July through February. That's in the left-hand column. The budget is our budget that we were budgeting for this year. And I'm going to give you, Dylan, a chance to look over that. And while you're looking over that, I just want to give you an update on the center itself and the things we've been doing. I'm just, I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible there because I know these meetings can be long for us. So just kind of going in on a few things. Last, in the last calendar year, not the last fiscal year, the last calendar year, the Mac, the Mountain Art Center did up 130 shows, events and rehearsals. Now, that's, that's a really huge number for a 1,000 seat venue. We did over 70 meetings. Meetings are, are everything from classroom meetings to business meetings. These occur during the day or in the evening. Sometimes they start at 6:00 in the morning and run until 8:00 at night. We also did five different things in our parking lot. Car shows. Uh, we also did, uh, five different things in our parking lot, uh, car shows, blood drives, things of that nature. So, these are events that go on at the center, and a lot of people think about us, uh, doing shows and say, well, you know, we don't see somebody there at night, well, sometimes we do shows during the day. This week, there, this month, for example, we have seven events, two of them are during the day. We have, uh, prom pride awareness, we have a thousand kids in there watching a, a program about, uh, uh, prom safety. We have, uh, all county band, we're gonna have a morning show, we'll have a thousand kids in for the morning show, the evening show will have about seven hundred, eight hundred parents in for that event. Anytime we do something like that, I promise you, after the, 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 after the show's over, the event's over, the restaurants fill up, okay? So, we're, those are the kind of things that does, don't get a lot of publicity. You know, you do an old pro medicine show or a Charlie Daniels, and those are the kind of things that get all the, wow, there's a lot of things going on there. But, these, these other events that we don't hear a lot about really impact the community in a big, big way. So, I just wanted to share that. If you'll notice, uh, gentlemen on the, the, uh, report, if you had time to look at them, just be able to answer questions, normally you don't get to see the, our budget, but, uh, as part of your regular routine, so that's why we wanted to include it in this one. You'll notice the Mountain Art Center is physically doing pretty good. Uh, at the end of February, we had a twenty-six thousand dollar surplus. If you'll notice on our budget, we are actually budgeted, uh, for the, throughout the year to end with an eighty-seven thousand dollar deficit. So, that puts us at about a hundred thousand dollars left remaining in our budget. We're prepared to spend it immediately if possible.
Let me just add to that, we set you up as a visit, if you don't touch that visit, people lost the bet.
Well, I know good, I know good, and we, we are prepared to do that if, if needed, but I think we did, we were happy about these numbers, and we did want to share that with the council and, uh, make you aware of it. Um, I think it, it, it puts us in a good position right now. And, uh, uh, I know there was a lot of concerns early on, and, uh, we were all anticipating this, this year because we were looking at, uh, uh, good information, and we wanted to see where we stood, and I, we're, we're very proud of that. And I gotta commend our staff, done a wonderful job, we're down to about four people on staff, and, uh, they're doing as many events as we've done at any time in the history of the Mountain Art Center. We're doing it with, uh, a fraction of the people that's, uh, required. Do you want to share a couple of quick things? Uh, I would, I had the honor of, or the opportunity to spend some time with Cory out on the road a couple of years ago, and I haven't told this story or shared this with anyone, but I was in San Diego, met up with him, was on Brad Paisley tour in San Diego, and rode around with him for three nights, so I was there the night before I met, met, met up with him. Eating at a restaurant in downtown San Diego, just a random place, hotel said, try this. Table next to me there, about five, six people, I'm by myself, we end, end up in a conversation about nutrition and fast food or whatever, and I tell him about being from Eastern Kentucky, or being from rural Appalachia where I'm from, and they said, well, where at, in Eastern Kentucky? Or I said, Eastern Kentucky, where? I said, well, Prestonsburg, small town, Eastern Kentucky, farthest most part of the state. Uh, they said, what do you do? I said, I'm the executive director of the Mountain Art Center down there, it's a little rural performing arts center. And lady at the table says, I've been there, San Diego, I've been there. I said, oh, really? She said, y'all had the quilts hanging in the ceiling. And, uh, and she looks around to other people at the table and said, I've never seen so much talent in one small area in my life, said, you would not believe it. Now, this is a random person in San Diego, and we could look, we could all look at each other and say, well, you know, small world. No, I'm gonna look at it and say, no, the Mountain Art Center has that kind of touch. You don't realize, and sometimes we don't realize, the people who know about this little bitty performing arts center in the mountains of Eastern Kentucky, and the impact it's had on musicians and the people who performed here, and the people who've been here, and the impression they have of us, and what they take back with them when they visit us. So, I just wanted to share that story with you guys real quick. Also wanted to bring you up to date on the, uh, the year racing museum. Uh, we should have our door in by August, uh, April the sixth, we're gonna start working on our door to get our car in, we're actually bringing one of the cars in, uh, it's one of the cars that was in, I can't remember which, which race it was.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, okay, and, uh, you know, we were talking about the museum and how it's gonna be a nice fit for the Mountain Art Center, and one of the things I hear is what's gonna bring people into the center, and we, we feel like, yeah, we're also gonna be a lot of people to see this. There'll be more people probably to see it in the first week than we've had in a long time. And, well, what we really want to drive home about this, this museum, I was talking to a high school group today. It's not, well, it's, if you're a NASCAR fan, you're gonna love this, you're gonna love all the memorabilia, you're gonna love seeing the car, you're gonna love seeing it at the Mountain Art Center. What's really important is the fact that young people will be able to see this, they'll be able to walk through this museum of this memorabilia and go, you know, you could be from a small town in rural Eastern Kentucky and still do great things. You could be from Prestonsburg and, and, and live here and do great things. And you can't, there's no reason to use your, your location or your dialect or our culture as, as a, uh, an excuse or a handicap. So, we should be looking at this museum not only for the memorabilia and the great stuff that's in there, but the opportunity to tell our young folks, hey, we can be great if we want to. I think of our, our musicians, Fred, that's come through there, the Corys and Rogers, and they, they wear their culture and their history in Eastern Kentucky, they're, they wear their dialect like a badge of honor. These guys will, will talk, uh, I speak to the Brad Paisley, and I'll be quick, I'm about to wrap this up, I'm feeling like a preacher, gonna have to sing again. But, but these guys, they go out and play, they, they, these fellows will talk to them, and they, well, they talk with this dialect. And they say, where are you from, and, you know, they laugh at them for a little bit, then Cory and Roger and Bo Tackett and those guys, they start playing their instruments. Then all of a sudden, everybody kind of gravitates to them and say, now, where did you say you were from? Eastern Kentucky, now where's that? Oh, Mountain Art Center, yeah, you know, we actually played there one time, and I remember going through, and they'll be in New York City, there was, there was a, uh, time they were in Edmonton, Canada, somebody knew about the Mountain Art Center and heard about them. And, so, the thing that, that I, I feel good about seeing and about the people that have gone through this, uh, our facility is, they're proud of their heritage, we should wear it like, again, like a badge of honor. Uh, and we should use this opportunity, uh, to not only promote Eastern Kentucky, but promote our, our culture and our heritage, and be proud of the fact of who we are and what we, what we, uh, what we do. And, uh, I think if there's anything that the Mac has done the last little bit, it's probably sent that message around to the United States, I'm very proud of that. All I have to say, if there almost is any questions about the center, or anything that you've heard, or anything you'd like an answer about finances. Looks good.
I will say, in my fifteen months, first time I seen this in Boston, so. That's good thing.
It's a good deal?
And then, and then you're leaving.
It's a good time, and, uh, just, I'll address that real quickly if I may, um, you know, if there's ever a good time to leave, but certainly did not want to leave the center in distress. Didn't want to leave, uh, you know, have somebody have to come in and fix problems. And this, when I saw, saw these numbers, and we have a new tourism director, and we, it's time that the Mountain Art Center gets some new blood, some new, some new ideas, some new, it, it's just a good time. Uh, the next person will be able to come in, they'll not have to, uh, worry about things for about six months to maybe ten months. They'll be able to coast, did I say coast, they'll be able to tweak if they want, they can make major changes if they want, but it won't be necessary, so it's, we're just in a really good position to make this move. And I think, uh, I think we all want to assure the continued success of the Mountain Art Center, I think that's all, uh, I don't know of anybody up here that's not interested in that, so. With that in mind, unless there's any questions, get out of your way.
Any questions on the floor for? Aight, thank you.
Thank you.
Denise, you've sat there anxiously waiting for this call to us.
Good evening.
Let me introduce Denise first, Denise is a big San Diego, she, uh, has assisted us with a lot of grants, a lot of monies that are, uh, federally and state, uh, allotted to us.
I wanted to update, uh, we're at, um, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in expenses that have occurred to date of a four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar project, but I've come to you tonight, uh, to ask you to incorporate some additional wage decisions in this project. This is a no-cost change order to the project. Um, and what occurred was, once we received the payroll reports from the contractor, it was evident that we needed to incorporate these additional wage rates to the project. So, uh, the funding agency has approved those changes, and now that's beginning to incorporate those officially into the project. And that's what I've got, had a couple of copies put around here that, um, asking you to.
I think you need that in form of a resolution?
Okay.
Is that what you need, Chandler?
No, we, we're just a motion.
Just a motion?
Just a motion. Yeah.
Okay, you got a motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Or discussion, is there discussion?
We have the answering questions.
It's just a money, right?
No, no change in, in terms, no, no cost to the project.
I was gonna ask him on sidewalks, but I called down on stuff. But we're working on the United States. We are, yes. All right, now I'll call a vote, all in favor?
Aight.
All opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome. That brings us down Arbor Day proclamation, they couldn't make it today from a fortunate apartment, so we'll move to, uh, five, which is approval of two fifteen and two twenty-two minutes.
So, move.
You got a motion, need a second?
Thank you.
It's been legally done, I need to vote, all in favor?
Aight.
All opposed? Got that done, approved bills, uh, so move. Uh, I got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aight.
All opposed? That brings us down to Pride Week, that is gonna be on eleven through the fifteenth, this actually works, coincides with what the county's doing. We will be picking up garbage, um, stuff that we don't normally pick up through the garbage cans. We will not be picking up construction debris, but if you're cleaning that pot, do your spring cleaning stuff, we're there for it. So, that will be eleven, that's, uh, April eleventh through April the fifteenth. You need to call down to City Hall, six oh six eight eight six two three three six, give them your name, address, and just, uh, a, a general idea of what they're picking up. We don't want you to pick up, correct, pick up, uh, stuff that we put in a dump truck, so.
You schedule this, you schedule this pickup.
Yeah, well, not really schedule, what you're gonna do is you're gonna call it in, and they'll get to it as they can, but we need you on that list. Now, if you caught something on the fifteenth, if you caught something on the sixteenth, you're not getting picked up for free, it'll cost you. And if they pick up construction debris, it will cost you. That being said, I have two other items on this, one is, uh, I need some help, and, uh, I've asked for it, I like to challenge people, and I've challenged people, different people, different times throughout the year. My challenge is to the city of Prestonsburg, we have a lot of ideas come up, I get hit up with ideas every day. People say, hey, we need to do this to pine trees, or we need to, uh, paint our sidewalks green or whatever. And I hear this stuff on a regular basis. What I'm gonna ask you is, if y'all look, I have a city of Prestonsburg, uh, it's an idea submission form. Uh, it says, the term is forum, it's got our information, it's an idea, please explain the project, idea you'd like for consideration. Then it has, uh, an area here for funding, it talks about donations, expenses, sponsors, and cost. Like, well, it's eco-tourism impact, explain how it's gonna affect us. Then it has references, if you have a reference location, let's say you know that, uh, a great example, Red River Gorge has, um, rock plant. Okay, we got rocks here, we'd like to climb them, put it as a reference, so we can go look, we got something to look at and see what's going on. When you flip it over, it says space, approximately how much space will be needed for this project? You know, I would love for us to have a big hundred fifty, two hundred thousand square foot mall, there's nowhere for this area. You can't do it, so we need to make sure that it's something we can do. Then utilities, it talks about special utilities that may be necessary for, may need high voltage, you may need more water, you may need special sewage and special treatment. Then it talks about personnel, with a project idea of acquiring volunteer paid personnel, if so, specify how much paid or volunteer personnel will be necessary. Talks about liability, what are the liabilities to be to the city? I know they talked about skate park forever and ever, they found insurance, they did, they did everything, and they found out how much the insurance was, the liability, way, that, that we could do it. And that's stuff we have to look at, and then it has comments, tell us anything additional you'd like to mention about it, has a signature date, put your information in the bottom of it. I'm doing this, 'cause my memory's not that good, my notepad wore out, and my phone is just about blocked up, I'm putting ideas.
And then you got online too?
Uh, we can't not yet, but we will, uh, we might be available to online. But, this is just something to help me categorize this stuff. If you bring something in here that is, you've got this information filled out, it gives us a springboard to start from. So, I'm asking for help. Now, the next thing I'm asking for help on, the beautification of Prestonsburg.
Where do I get those forms at?
Uh, they can get here to City Hall, anytime.
Please, we could email them, if somebody can't get here.
Yes.
We can email them, those, and they can email them back to us.
Call eight eight six two three three six, we'll email them to you. Uh, my next thing is beautification, as a wise, had a wise man tell me, as, uh, spring was coming on, he said, what you need to do is drive through this town like it's the first time you've ever been in it. It's hard to do, it really is, it's hard for someone new that drives these streets every day. So, I need help with seeing what's going on out there, because I do drive these streets every day. And, you know, I, I sort of look at Pottel, I know where it's at, I cut around it. And what we have to do is beautify our city, and not just a pothole, but if we need different flowers here, if we need different trees planted here, if we need to make sure that something else is done, this is stuff we need. But what I'm gonna ask you is, I ask that the city's gonna have to help us. Uh, if, and I had a lot of people come in and say, well, we need to do this on this street. Well, I tell you what you need to do, you need to contact your neighbors, see if you can get a group together, we'll come meet with you, we'll have David come after his flowers, we'll have Ronnie come after his public works. I need help in, in trying to organize some of these projects, and we, so we prioritize them. I mean, that, all of a sudden, I hear about, oh, yeah, we got a pothole up here, it's been here for four years, okay, I didn't know it, I've never been on that street uh, since I walked it two years ago, three years ago. So, what we need is, we need the citizens to get involved, take some pride in this city, help us clean it up, whatever we can do to work with you, we'll want to have it. That being said, uh, we can move on unless anybody's got any comment or discussion about that. All right, do we have any unfinished business from previous meetings? Do we have any new, well, new business, one new business, planning zoning board appointment, I sent information out to you guys, uh, he's interested in being on the board, uh, is there any other boards that would be in conflict or anything? He works for Alliance, I checked, Alliance is a construction management company, it's not somebody that's involved in the planning, zoning and stuff, so, not a surveyor, not an engineer.
Is he an alternate or?
No, I need one, I, I need one, I'm one short right now. I got a motion, need a second?
Second.
You got a second, all in favor?
Aight.
All opposed? Resolution number zero two, I'm sorry, I, I said the right name, it's Barry Kakers. Uh, Mr. Barry Kakers is, uh, is the one I recommended, and, uh, he, he's shown me interest in it, he's, uh, he spends a lot of time with, uh, around the community, and he's very interested in it. Resolution number zero two dash two zero one six, no, I don't even read for you.
A resolution of the city of Prestonsburg, Lloyd County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to make application for and a home award to enter into an agreement with Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to execute any documents which are needed and necessary by the Department of Homeland Security to facilitate and administer the project and to act as authorized for this project. The project is the Department of Forest Department application for body armor.
So, they just picked you. Uh, yes, it is, yes, it is, all my security, yes. Need a motion?
I'll make out a motion.
I got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second.
You got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Line of credit renewal. This is line of credit that we obtained during the last administration, after the Maze Branch and Triple Branch flood. We still hold some out on it.
How much do you want?
One ninety-nine.
One ninety-nine.
Was that the four or the fourteen flood?
Yes, not, not April, but August flood. The August flood.
So the 2014?
Yes. So we still owe some money on it. Sharon and I was actually in a conversation today with FEMA, we still have $200,000 outstanding with them. We're trying to get that pushed through as quick as we can. It's sort of hung up in, I guess, the state, right now. It's hung up, we tried to push it along a little bit today, hopefully we had some success. I need a, we've got the credit, I just, I need to renew it, give it a two-year term.
Turned out it's bid, it's only.
Well, it's already, it's already inactive. I mean, it's already, it's already a loan.
It's already a loan.
It's one we already have.
It's due the first of the month and if we don't renew it, we have to pay it off.
We owe, we owe the $199,000.
What's the interest rate then?
I'd have to go look, Don, it's not really, it's not bad.
It's not bad.
The fee that has to be low.
It's not, no, we did that.
Yeah, we bid and we did that. I want to ask them for continuation.
Just renew it.
Just renew it till we get that off. I got a motion, need a second?
Second.
You got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Police audit. I'm proud to say, and I actually don't have it in front of me, Larry, I, I guess I do. Got information back from the Department of Criminal Justice, train, criminal justice, they did an audit of all their files and information through their police department and it says, the information received by this office in case of all pay supplements are being distributed in accordance with KRS 1510. And goes through just another saying, it's all good, but we cleared that audit and it was like its first one and it turned out really well, really well. That's just information.
What it go, Larry?
Yeah. This is something I need. This is something I need for y'all to take under the eye, this is for discussion now and we can look at it the next time, it's EMD certification requirement for firemen. There's been some interest in dropping the EMT certification. We will still be able to keep EMTs on each shift, but not requiring all firemen to have an EMT. It's, the way it was put to me was, we're losing a lot of good firemen because they're not EMTs. So this is something that we would have to change in our policies and I'm pretty sure it's in our ordinance also, it's in the ordinance, the police, or involving the fire, public safety way it was at one time. So it would have to be an amendment to the, to the ordinance and that would take us two votes, but I want you guys to reconsider it. We'll take it up at the next meeting and that will be listed in our unfinished business next meeting, but it gives everybody a chance to look at it, study it, think on it, whatever you want. If any discussion about that right now, anybody feel?
Like, your department chief here, does he want it, sell it? Will it help him, hurt him? What happens to scheduling? You know, you gotta put, you know, this one here, because he can't work here, he doesn't have his paper, so we gotta put him over here, now what are we gonna do? We're gonna hire two more because we don't have one to do this.
That's exactly, that's exactly the conversation I had with him and he said, with the manpower we have right now. Now, there is an incentive out there that if they do get the EMT certification, obviously pay raises because they're more trained. So, and the ones that had it, I can assure you, you're not gonna let go. So right now, with the manpower we have, we're okay that we would have an EMT on each shift.
And the whole reason for that was, many years ago, what had happened was trying to get, you had to wait thirty, thirty-five, forty minutes for an ambulance to get on scene when you had those jobs. That's the reason why that was incorporated at that time. That's kind of changed a lot now, stuff, it's helped, it's got better and stuff, so the problem is, is a lot of your EMTs, or excuse me, EMT candidates, they go through their boards, they're wonderful, 150 or even 400 certified firemen, but that's not something that they can reach for, maybe you get tested, cancer testing, some of them are free, they'd rather be on the ladder, those types of things. So you are losing good firefighters because they couldn't get the certification. That's the whole purpose.
Any more discussion on that? We need an executive session to discuss an issue. I have a motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Barely.
Man, we got a story for you.
All right.
Is it only given the license?
You can believe it. I need a motion, I got a motion, come out of the executive session, need a second?
Second.
You got a second, all in favor? All opposed? Nothing happened before the, or coming out of the executive session. We are now down to other new business. Is there any new business?
You spoke earlier about the Ford County Pride pickup?
Yes.
Pride coordinator, one of the new pride coordinators contacted me and he said that they are looking for, the way I understood it was more permanent places that needed cleanups more often. And he said, if I would mention to the council, just to be thinking about areas in the city that maybe don't get enough attention, that we may need more district to do, like parks or?
The look for dumps is what they're looking for, cleanup. I got an email on that and the look for dumps cleanup. Fortunately, we really don't have that major of a problem.
Exactly, throwing out there to everybody, ideas.
Yeah, if anybody knows of one, now we did have one. Go ahead, Barry.
Middle Creek Battlefield.
That's, they're really looking for dumps as opposed to just, the way I'm. There was a cleanup this week over, far over the lake. They amassed a huge.
How many times did they all off this thing?
Huh? I'd be afraid to say. I will say, if anybody here that had a sign up and they lost it, we find out what ended up there. Over the hill, coming off Stonecrest. My son thought it was really funny. He can, he found my signs laid on the hill up there. He just thought it was hilarious and he just stacked them up beside the road and the garbage was picked up.
So then you didn't go collect all the, or?
Oh, no, this is way before. I collected all my signs on the road.
What was left?
It was left, I collected what was left. That being said, we had a Easter egg hunt this weekend that was just out. I cannot brag on the people that worked on it and everything, but, you know, it was our little cheese.
Somewhere in March?
We put in 10,000 eggs. We had a special needs area that went real well. Then we had three other egg groups that was really just mass chaos.
How many were solid, you're at the end of hand?
A thousand.
Yeah.
A thousand.
Well, nowhere far.
Huh? Thousand.
Period.
If not more.
If not more, yeah, that's just, that's concerning. I would tell you this, we were gonna put that in the other days, but I won't discuss this here. We'll discuss it later.
I just heard a lot of positive comments on it, Food City, Walmart, everywhere I went, mothers were, you know.
Oh, yeah.
The 10,000 eggs were.
Not.
Not nearly enough.
I would tell you this, in a minute and a half, they cleared the ground and what the egg left. In a minute and a half.
And you sure there weren't 5,000?
If we could have dealt with garbage, if we'd have focused on the garbage, then we would be, we would need pride. All right, any other new business? The new crews are sitting out front, if anybody wants to look at it, here's the keys. Harry says he's gonna take it for a ride, he can take it through his time.
I'll, can I say, I will advertise it too for you guys?
Yes.
The squad is doing something that we've never done before this weekend. We're trying it, we'll probably end up learning from it. But Friday night from four to eight and Saturday from ten to four, we're doing something called Sensitive Buddy for those children that need that type of environment. We're gonna be there, so if you know anybody that would like to come up there, they'll have their pictures and all that with them on a CD and stuff like that, so it's kind of, I'm a little nervous about it, but I want to do it right and I'm sure we'll learn a few things too, we've got a lot of people helping us.
No other new business? I got a motion, a journey, a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Thank y'all.